Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing on the Committee on Education. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Just a reminder, no one may approach the dais at any point during this hearing. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to the education hearing. Good afternoon, I'm Councilmember Rita Joseph, Chair of the Committee on Education. Thank you for joining us today for this hearing on legislation. We will hear seven pieces of legislation, including Intro Number 121, sponsored by Councilmember Raphael Salamanca Jr., a local law in relation to requiring the Department of Education to report annually on the number of teachers, administrators, and school staff who have completed therapeutic crisis intervention in schools' training. Intro Number 857, sponsored by myself, a local law in relation to expanding disaggregated data in the Department of Education reporting, including metrics on students in foster care. Many DOE reports do not include disaggregated data on students in foster care or students in temporary housing. More data would allow for greater oversight and analysis on serving cities' most vulnerable students. Intro 928, sponsored by Councilmember Camilla Hanks, a local law in relation to requiring the Department of Education to report on funding for restorative justice programming and services. Resolution Number 422, sponsored by Councilmember Vicky Palladino, a resolution calling upon the New York City Department of Education to expand career-connected learning programs and opportunities at all public high schools. Resolution Number 44A, sponsored by myself, a resolution calling on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass the governor's assigned legislation requiring all district leadership teams to operate under open meeting law requirements, requiring district leadership teams to operate under the open meeting law would provide for greater transparency in the state education process. Resolution Number 445A, sponsored by myself, a resolution calling upon New York State Legislature to introduce, pass, and the governor's assigned legislation requiring district leadership team and school leadership team to include student representative. A student representative appointee would offer district leadership and school leadership teams to include perspective of those impacted by its work. And lastly, we will hear Resolution Number 446A, also sponsored by myself, a resolution calling upon the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass the governor's assigned legislation establishing a citywide leadership team. Establishing a citywide leadership team is one step toward ensuring equity by having students' voices, parent voices represented in all education decision-making spaces. Thank you to the advocates, members of the public who are joining us today, and thank you to the representative from the administration for joining us. I would like to thank the Education Committee, including Nadia Jean-François Jan Atwell, Chloé Rivera, Elizabeth Hoffman, Aliya Ali, Monica Salati, and Nia Hyen. I'd like to remind everyone who wish to testify today's, in person today, you must fill out the witness slip, which is located on the desk of Sergeant at Arms near the entrance of this room. Please indicate on the witness slip whether you're here to testify in favor or in opposition to a bill or multiple bills. I also want to point out that we will not be voting on any legislation today to allow as many people as possible to testify. Testimony will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you're testifying on Zoom or in person. I'm going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. He's not here. Now, I will turn to Councilmember Hanks for remarks on Intro 928. And then finally, I'll turn to Councilmember Vicky Palladino for remarks on Resol 422. Now, I'll turn it over to Committee Counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you so much, Chair Joseph. Thanks for providing me with the opportunity to discuss the importance of my bill, Intro 928. This bill is significant to me because, as our city strives to explore alternatives to incarceration and foster improved police-community relations, it is imperative that we place a strong emphasis on prioritizing funding for restorative justice. Restorative justice is an approach to discipline that goes beyond mere punishment. It focuses on repairing harm, promoting learning, and fostering community involvement. This program creates a more compassionate and effective system that addresses the root causes of wrongdoing and encourages personal growth and responsibility. Therefore, it is important to recognize that restorative justice in schools play a pivotal role in reducing suspensions, school-based arrests, and other forms of punitive discipline. Such disciplinary measures often disproportionately affect students from marginalized communities. So this bill, Intro 928, is a comprehensive reporting bill that aims to ensure the effectiveness of restorative justice programs. It will provide transparency to determine whether school restorative justice-based programs' funding is impactful or could be reallocated to be more effective. Under this bill, schools will be mandated to report on specific types of programming and services they offer, and whether students are actively utilizing programs and services by tracking and monitoring these resources. We can ensure that they are being allocated appropriately and effectively. I firmly believe that by enacting Intro 928, we will contribute to the remarkable progress our city has already made in fostering safer, more inclusive, and welcoming school environments. Thank you, Chair Joseph.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanks. I'd like to turn over now to Councilmember Palladino for her remarks on Resol 422.
Thank you and good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity. Chair Joseph, this is about vocational learning and bringing it back to our public high schools. This is clearly a bipartisan bill and a good example of legislation that can bring all of us together, no matter what the party affiliation. Public high schools should provide students with vocational opportunities. Students who are active and kinetic learners benefit from vocational learning opportunities. High-demand career opportunities such as the culinary arts, cosmopolitan, mechanics, carpentry, electrical, heating, plumbing, architecture, as well as agriculture, and training in those fields, open doors to opportunity to students of all backgrounds, and offer good-paying jobs and skills, and also starts them into a road of entrepreneurship. A cooperative model which interrogates academics and skill-based training can be very successful. Schools can partner with local businesses. This was what they used to do years ago. It was called the Cooperative Learning, where you went to school for a couple of weeks and you worked a couple of weeks. Great opportunity for the kids. Schools can partner with local businesses and/or colleges to receive training. Parents need to get more involved and meet with their school guidance counselor and to discuss the options for the child. It's not a one-size-fits-all here. This is differentiated learning at its finest. Students in their junior and senior years of high school may not have an interest in art or music, which most are required to take. Skill-based trade opportunities must be an option for students as an alternative to traditional elective courses. Students should be involved with their classroom and instructional methods. This will improve the learning experience and the social and emotional development of our kids. So I just want to give them another pathway. I think it's something we used to do years ago. It needs to be brought back. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Palladino. Now, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Genowitz, Councilmember Velez, Councilmember Gutierrez, Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Narcisse, Stephen, and Palladino. Thank you for being here.
I will now administer the oath. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember Question? Kenyatta Reed. Robin Davison. Mary Shimon. I'm sorry, Mary. Okay, thank you. Katie Jeterlinic. And John Hammer. Thank you. You can go ahead and begin your testimony. Sorry.
Hello? You can hear me? Great. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, and members of the Education Committee here today. My name is Katie Jeterlinic, and I am the Chief of Staff for the Division of Family and Community Engagement and External Affairs at New York City Public Schools. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss Intro Number 857, which expands the reporting requirements in several existing local laws to include reporting on students in foster care. We know that these students face many challenges outside of school and require help dedicated to their needs in school. We share the council's commitment to ensure that students in foster care receive all the support they need to succeed. We would especially like to thank Chair Joseph for her leadership in this area. Thanks to the advocacy and leadership of the City Council, New York City Public Schools now has an office exclusively dedicated to supporting the needs of students in foster care. The Office of Foster Care seeks to meet the complex needs of students in foster care by developing innovative policies to support schools. This office is a subset of our current Students in Temporary Housing Team under the Office of Community Supports and Wellness. This is a natural fit because it draws from existing knowledge, resources, and capacity, and they are best positioned to make a substantial and positive impact on students in foster care. The Foster Care Office has worked and engaged with both internal and external partners to best support students in foster care. The team has worked collaboratively with the New York City Administration for Children's Services and foster care agencies to ensure that students who were promotion in doubt or students who are recommended for summer enrichment were quickly enrolled in the summer rising program. Additionally, the foster care team partnered with ACS Children's Center to provide enrichment programming to students awaiting a foster care placement. We partnered with the Ackerman Institute to deliver trauma training specific to the needs of foster care students. It's okay. To bridging the gap, social workers designated liaisons, ACS social workers, and school counselors. The foster care team has also been partnering with different vendors and community partners to provide targeted mentoring supports, educational enrichment, and access to college and post-secondary readiness opportunities for students in foster care. We look forward to Chair Joseph meeting the Executive Director of the Office in a forthcoming meeting. Offices have worked collaboratively to ensure effective engagement with the adult responsible for academic decisions for a student in foster care. In early fall of 2022, New York City Public Schools, particularly our Special Education Office, collaborated with ACS and our advocacy partners and released the Guidelines and Procedures for the Assignment of Surrogate Parents, a comprehensive update to guidance for school and agency staff on how to identify which adult in the life of a student with a disability has the authority to make educational decisions on their behalf. It also describes the circumstances when a surrogate parent must be assigned. This is especially important in the context of special education where parental consent for initiation and evaluation in services is required. Often, there are questions about the status of the student's foster, birth, or adoptive parent rights with respect to providing this consent. This updated guidance also includes detailed information on the role, responsibilities, and expectations of surrogate parent volunteers. As a follow-up to the guidance released last autumn, and based on feedback we received from the field and from advocates for children, we are again working with our ACS and advocacy partners to update this guidance with information about efforts that must be taken when a birth and adoptive parent cannot be easily located. I'd now like to turn to the proposed legislation. Intro Number 857 expands disaggregated data in New York City Public Schools' reporting to include metrics on students in foster care. Reporting data on students in foster care and temporary housing is a welcome addition to our reports, presents an opportunity to shine a light on how New York City Public Schools serves our most vulnerable populations. Tracking this data will help the New York City Public Schools to better support schools in understanding the impact of foster care or housing insecurity on our students, provide professional learning specific to the needs of these populations to our staff, and design multi-tiered systems of support to address these students' distinct needs. We fully support the legislation to increase transparency about foster care students, some of our most vulnerable children, and we look forward to working with the council.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, and all of the members of the New York City Committee of Education here today. My name is Dr. Robin Davison, and I am the Executive Director of School Culture and Climate within the Office of Safety and Preventative Partnerships. I am joined here today by Kenyatta Reed, Executive Director, and Mary Shimon, Director of Crisis. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss our ongoing efforts to ensure that all schools are providing a safe and supportive learning environment for students and staff. Under the leadership of Chancellor David Banks, the safety and well-being of our students is a top priority for New York City Public Schools. Together, we are committed to ensure that all New York City Public Schools students and staff experience complete safety at school. This encompasses physical, emotional, psychological, and social safety for all students and staff. Complete safety is about ensuring the intentional presence of safety in the form of trusting relationships, equity, affirmation, compassion, dignity, and respect. Through positive, supportive interventions and programming, we aim to equip New York City Public Schools with practices, support systems, and resources to ensure complete safety resulting in a reduced adverse student behavior and an increased academic and pro-social growth. Over the years, we have worked closely with advocates and other stakeholders to make significant strides toward creating a supportive learning environment for all of our students through our safety procedures and protocols. During and after the pandemic, our students have experienced trauma that affects their behavior. Recognizing that our youth needs social and emotional support on various levels, this administration and previous ones have, over time, implemented several initiatives to strengthen the support of our students that our students receive in schools, including the expansion of restorative practices. With the great advocacy and support of the City Council, New York City Public Schools initially adopted restorative practices in school year 2015-16 with a City Council-funded pilot program with 25 schools and one consultant leading this pilot. Since then, we have expanded restorative practices so that over 900 schools to date receive direct or indirect restorative support from a staff of 22 individuals, including one citywide coordinator, eight borough directors, and 13 district coordinators who support cohorts of schools. In addition, through the restorative practices, we have been able to provide students with leadership opportunities in supporting their school's efforts in implementing restorative practices. Through this, students serve as members of their restorative justice action team, which is called R-JAT, which is responsible for developing and implementing the Restorative Justice Action Team Plan, co-facilitate youth circles, serve as peer mediators, co-facilitate and co-lead the annual Youth Summit event. Restorative practices focus on fostering community to prevent conflict and encourage youth to accept responsibility to repair the harm created by the behavior that was exhibited. Restorative practices' mission within the Office of Safety and Preventative Partnerships is to disrupt and dismantle systemic practices detrimental to the academic and social-emotional growth of students. Restorative practices have been scientifically proven to reduce suspension rates, increase school attendance, and reduce disproportionality for marginalized populations. In New York City Public Schools, restorative practices are implemented on a tiered approach ranging from pre-exposure, exposure, to engage and embedded. Schools identified as pre-exposure or exposure are in the initial stages of implementing restorative practices. And engage and embedded schools have fully adopted restorative practices into everyday practice. In fiscal year 2023, the budget allotted to support restorative practices in schools was $17.9 million, which derives from $5.9 million in tax levy and $12 million in stimulus funding. The tax levy budget supports $3.2 million in salaries and $2.7 million in OTPS and per session combined. The stimulus budget supports $1.2 million in salaries and $8 million in OTPS and per session combined. The stimulus budget also includes $2.8 million allocated directly to schools through a school allocation memorandum to support schools' restorative justice action teams and any student-led affinity restorative justice club. Across the country, it is generally true that students who identify as Black, Hispanic, Native American, LGBTQ, and those with disabilities have been subjected to disproportionate disciplinary measures that can have devastating long-term consequences. Students of color also receive a higher share of suspensions for insubordination and greater suspensions durations compared to their peers. Through restorative practices in New York City Public Schools, we have created opportunities where students see themselves as active members of their school communities, take ownership of their own school cultures and leadership roles to encourage a more positive, inclusive, and welcoming environment for them and their peers. There is a greater emphasis on responses to inappropriate behavior than to seek to reconnect people. With restorative practices, staff capacity to deal with challenging situations increases, and community members are committed to listening to one another create a safer and more caring spaces and school environments. In addition, we have released regulations and guidance documents that set forth policies, procedures, and best practices to be followed in addressing student behavior. Chances Regulation 8411 provides guidance to schools on responding to behavior crisis and when to contact 911 for emergency medical services. When students experience behavior crisis and engage in behavior that poses a substantial risk of serious injury to themselves or others, schools must determine the appropriate way to manage the behavior and whether it can be safely de-escalated by school staff using appropriate strategies and interventions. Every effort must be made safely to de-escalate the behavior, where possible, using strategies and interventions for addressing behavior crisis. Schools are required to develop crisis intervention plans that identify intervention strategies for students in crisis. Administrators are required to exert every effort, where possible, to safely de-escalate situations drawing on strategies and resources provided to schools. In extreme situations, when a student poses an imminent and substantial risk of injury to themselves or others, the principal or designee may consider alternative measures to defuse the situation. In an effort to avoid crisis situations, we introduced therapeutic crisis intervention for schools, known as TCIS, during the spring of 2015. Over time, working with Cornell University, we have trained field staff members to turnkey this training to schools. Since 2015, we have trained over 6,000 staff members in various roles, including administrators, teachers, counselors, and other school staff. In addition, in partnership with NYPD's School Safety Division, we have trained over 350 Level III agents and supervisors. TCIS is based on the four-day Cornell University certification course. It is an evidence-based, informed crisis prevention and management system that has shown to decrease incidence of aggression and violence while improving the staff and organizational capacity to prevent and effectively manage crisis events. Staff must attend all four days to receive certification. Upon successful completion of all course requirements, participants will be certified practitioners of TCIS who are trained to proactively prevent and/or de-escalate potential crisis situations with students, one. Two, enable students, including those in crisis, to improve their coping strategies and manage crisis situations to reduce the risk of harm to students and staff. After the staff member is trained, the principal or designee must update the crisis de-escalation plan to reflect the staff trained. In addition to TCIS, the New York City Public Schools offer staff opportunities to participate in a number of crisis-related trainings, included de-escalation strategies, grief and trauma, suicide prevention, and building and strengthening crisis teams. Since school year 1415, over 18,000 school staff have participated in either TCIS or crisis strategy supports. In addition to crisis teams at the school level, each superintendent's office has a student service manager who serves as a point for crisis support at the superintendent level. Centrally, we have the Director of Crisis, who oversees the development and implementation of crisis support citywide. The Director of Crisis works closely with the student service managers at the superintendent level and with schools directly to ensure schools receive the support that they need before, during, and after a crisis occurs. I would like to thank the members of the council for prioritizing support to our schools to best address student behavior. We would like now to address the two proposals presented today. Intro 121, a local law requiring a report on the number of school staff administrators who have completed therapeutic crisis intervention training, and Intro 928, a local law requiring a report on funding for restorative justice programming and services. New York City Public Schools supports both proposals and welcomes the opportunities to discuss them further with council members. New York City Public Schools has been a national leader in reimagining approaches to school safety. Schools should be a place where all students, families, and educators feel safe, welcome, and supported. As part of this commitment, we have focused on providing schools with the resources and tools they need to support students and educators, fostering trusting relationships, strengthening student development of social and emotional skills, and ensuring that schools are better equipped to de-escalate demanding situations. Supporting safe and healthy learning environments in New York City Public Schools will continue to be one of our foremost priorities. Thank you again for your continued advocacy and for the opportunity to discuss these proposed legislations with you today. We will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Councilmember Ung and Councilmember Wrestler. I'll turn it over now to my colleague, Councilmember Hanks, for her questions.
Thank you so much for that, for your testimony, and really drilling down into what we believe is the core issues. So I think you answered my first question, which is, you know, do you support this legislation? So thank you very much. But I wanted to move into, how many schools currently offer restorative justice programming and services?
Sure. So currently, we have, we service 900 schools, providing direct and indirect support to those schools. So direct support is one that have comprehensive professional development. It has the support of a restorative justice coordinator. And indirect are schools that don't have support of a restorative justice coordinator, or only when needed, and also receive comprehensive professional development and support.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So do you have a breakdown by borough, middle school, high schools? How many of these schools don't currently have programming?
Yeah, so currently, there are a total of 1,626 schools in New York City Public Schools, and restorative justice supports over 920, to be specific. And that includes mostly middle and high school.
Thank you so much, Chair. May I ask? Thank you. Do you currently know the budget for restorative justice programs for fiscal FY '24?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Do you know what the budget is currently for restorative justice programming?
The current budget, yes. So currently, we have $5.9 million in tax levy and $12 million in stimulus funding, which is a total of $17.9 million.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. You had a sign up for questions? Yeah. You have a question? Go ahead.
The Chair is so gracious. I guess, I guess, following along those lines, thank you so much for the description of the program, and obviously, it's of great importance to us. Would you be able to provide the council with, you broke down of the 922, that includes direct and indirect? Give us an aggregated, or a list of that breakdown? What schools are receiving direct support? And at what levels? And what schools are receiving the indirect support?
We have that. I currently don't have that on me, but I'll be happy to share it with you.
I would love that. Also, is there a plan? This is a huge issue within the Board of Education. There's quite a lot of programming that is dependent on stimulus funding, which we understand will soon be expiring. What is the plan to maintain the level of service and expand to meet the need when this $12 million expires?
So, New York City Public Schools is committed to continuing restorative justice programming for fiscal year 2024. for fiscal year, for fiscal year twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four.
Right. Is there a plan when the twelve million dollars expires? This is not a baseline funding. This is federal funding. Our understanding is this will soon be expiring, actually, October twenty-four. Do you have a commitment from DOE to, to use that money further out into the future? And then how is DOE planning in fiscal twenty-five and twenty-six to maintain and expand restorative justice programming in our schools?
Thank you for that question. Senior leadership has expressed their commitment to restorative practices. I think that this is going to take a lot more planning to fill in for, for that federal funding. We can't speak to the specifics of it right now, but we do know that the current administration, senior leadership, is committed to the continuation of restorative practices as it is now.
And are, are you aware of an ability to, there's quite a lot of federal stimulus money within DOE that is not yet used and allocated? It, are you aware of the potential of being able to use stimulus money beyond the October twenty-four deadline date, a commitment to use it into twenty-five?
Yeah, I can't speak to, I, I can't speak to that. We are the program experts.
Got it.
Right?
Well, we'd love to hear back from the administration on their commitment of using that, using that money beyond the deadline date and also understand a clear plan around how we are going to make sure that the program is maintained and expanded. Clearly, we have a, a long way to go, right? Because even, even within, within the expansion, which is great, there's, I still don't know how much is direct, how much is indirect, and all the other schools that still need, obviously, this kind of programming. And lastly, Chair, how, how does the agency monitor the efficacy of what is happening in the school with the direct supports? Like, is there an assessment? Is there technical assistance provided? How do, how do we know, you know, we know often we have a lot of really excited folks that get trained up and then they move on, and you lose air and energy and expertise. How do we maintain, like, efficacy of this important programming?
Sure. Thank you for that question. We certainly monitor the restorative justice practices across schools internally as a system or as an agency within our department, but also, we are working with an independent evaluator to evaluate restorative practices across New York City public schools.
And what is, and what is the monitoring look like? Is it an annual visit? Is it a phone call? Like, what, could you walk me through what that looks like?
So specifically, with our office, we visit schools ongoing frequently. Right? So I have been in a seat for six months, and I've been to every, probably every borough, well, I have been to every borough, haven't been to every school, but we have been frequently creating systems to monitor restorative practices across New York City's public schools. And with the independent evaluator, they will do more research-based, a more research-based study on what is working across New York City public schools as it pertains to restorative practices.
And, and can you tell us more about the parameters of that study? When is it expected to be done? And does it include any kind of participatory action method where young people are, are really driving the design and methodology?
Well, we have just started working with the independent evaluator, but we have an abundance of youth programs in restorative practices, and we certainly will be including that as part of their research.
Wrapping up, Chair, I guess I'd love to understand the approach that the evaluation is, is taking and how young people are informing the design, and also would like to understand the cost of that evaluation and the overall timeframe. It would be great for council to be able to receive that information. So thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just wanted to do a follow-up. In the programming, you said you have about nine hundred programs, right, with twenty-two staff? Is that enough to service?
So the reason why we have schools that receive direct and indirect support is because it's a tiered model. Obviously, we could always use more resources to, to support schools. Your question really leads us back to what Councilmember Aviles was mentioning. Our team actively works within schools, monitoring, supporting administration. More headcount, more resources would allow us to do more of that. But as of right now, we, we tier our schools, right, to say where they are in the implementation process. And then also, we have them grouped between direct support and then indirect. So the indirect allows schools that do not have a restorative justice coordinator assigned to them full access to trainings and asynchronous supports.
Okay. What is the budget for restorative justice programming in the fiscal twenty twenty-four budget?
So New York City public schools are committed to having the same budget, which is seventeen million, seventeen point nine million.
Do schools have restorative justice programming, also have Project Pivot programming?
Yes, there are, I believe, there's sixty-seven schools that have restorative justice and also Project Pivot.
And how do New York City public schools assess the impact of Project Pivot and restorative justice?
So we are working with an independent evaluator to assess the impact of restorative justice across New York City public schools. We just began that process. And Project Pivot is first year in its early stages. And so there, there's going to be a plan in place in terms of the, supporting the, the evaluation of Project Pivot.
And just, just to add, we have schools that have deeply embedded practices of restorative. Those schools have seen a significant decline in the use of punitive disciplines such as suspensions. Those schools have also seen a decrease in incidence as well. So we monitor those data points. We also look at the data points such as the New York City survey to see how children and staff, those, the children and staff in those schools also indicate that they also feel safer as a result of the implementation of these practices. When it's deeply embedded, we have a hundred and seventy-two schools who fall in that top-tier model, meaning that at least fifty percent of the staff is fully trained, and they have an active youth restorative justice team as well. So that's just a small part of how we evaluate the schools when we're walking through with them, how we coach them onto the next stage of their development. And then we see that those schools that have deep practices have sustainable, long-term results that are positive.
That's the model. Are parents included in restorative justice practices? Very important.
So that, that is a part of the embedded, yeah, for a school to be embedded, they do have to have a certain number of parents that are also being trained as well. That includes the school leadership team and whatever members of, of the parent leadership group, that you would call it?
DTA, SLT?
Yeah, yeah, you know.
Um, okay, okay. How about school safety? Are they also trained? I noticed you said Level Three. Not all Level Threes are in school buildings every day. So the ones that are interacting with the students every day, are they trained in restorative practices?
So I ju, I just want to note, there's very different skillset that, that school safety agents need and that teachers and, and other educators need. School safety agents definitely need therapeutic crisis intervention training to know how to de-escalate.
Correct.
Restorative justice practices has a lot to do with, number one, building community on a daily basis, whether in house, crew, advisory, however you want to do it. That's where our teaching staff are trained to do that. We want to focus our attention on those people who are doing that and making sure SSAs, our school safety agents, are trained to de-escalate, knowing that our agents are not being asked to facilitate community-building circles. So our emphasis is on the DOE pedagogical staff for restorative practices. School safety agents are exposed to restorative practice, so they know what it is.
Right.
They can have a brief overview to understand the concept, but they are not expected to be circle keepers.
Okay. How long does, um, the de-escalation training takes for the staff? How long is it?
TCIS is a four-day training.
And how often do you, you know, PD to constantly renew the training? And I'm sure there's, since it's evidence-based, the evidence changes. As long as, as data changes, you adapt as well.
That's right. So can you say that question again? Because my colleague is the Director of Crisis, so.
She's coming to, she's coming to answer my question? Come on up.
Yeah, can you just restate this, so she can answer?
The, how long and how often do you do PD to constantly refresh the staff?
Okay, great. Thank you for that question. So it's ongoing. TCIS is a four-day training, so we run it from eight-thirty to three o'clock citywide, and we offer it ongoing. So for example, we're already offering, we have summer cohorts planned.
Okay, so, all right. So this is about intro one twenty-one, too. Is the administration in support of this legislation?
Yes, of course.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, how many and what percentage of schools have TCIS training? And provide a breakdown. How many schools have, have staff that have been trained? And, and provide the breakdown. I did send the questions in advance, so the homework was supposed to be done.
Yay.
Yeah. So currently, we have six thousand thirty-four staff trained. We have, oh gosh, thanks. Yep, and the schools, I, we have twelve hundred and sixty-nine.
And that's by teachers, administrators, guidance council, social workers, and other school staff as well? That whole six thousand include all of that?
Yes. So teachers are three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine. Administrators, six hundred and four. Other, which is social workers, counselors, fourteen, uh, one thousand four hundred and fifty-one.
And how many additional teachers, administrators, administrators, and school staff do you anticipate on training in TCIS for FY twenty-four?
I'm going to say eight hundred.
Um, and you provided the breakdown. Okay, I'm going to pivot a little bit for Councilmember Aviles. One more question.
Chair, you're the best. I can't remember if I asked this question, so forgive me. Did, um, did you tell us the cost of the evaluation? Can you tell us what the cost that is being allocated?
I can. At this point, because what we have done is real, of restorative.
Are you talking about restorative?
For the cost for the evaluation for restorative justice.
Oh, okay.
I guess what is the money that is allocated to do that impact study?
We don't have the cost yet, but we, we happy to share it and receive it.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Amazing. TCIS, how much is it going to cost us in the FY twenty-four school year budget?
This is, uh, um, I would say for, uh, maybe five thousand dollars.
Okay. I, as the education chair, always send over the questions. You have to do your homework when you come to the hearing.
So to be hon, so what we have done over the years is to build capacity with TCIS. So we have trainers who are already trained, so there's no cost with it. So we have some trainers at the central office, and we have them here in the superintendent's team. So we are, um, what we are, what we are in need of is five thousand dollars for books and manuals. That's it. So as far as the training, that's, that's it.
And I will email all the questions that you could not answer, so I can get a proper answer.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. And with intro, I'd like to write, oh, Councilmember Wrestler, you have a question. Go ahead.
There are just important things. I didn't want to disrespect my colleague, Councilmember Gutierrez. And I did want to just thank Chair Joseph for this hearing, and I'm particularly proud to have co-sponsored Councilmember Hanks' legislation today, which I think is a terrific bill, intro nine two eight. So thank you for your leadership on that. And I'm really happy to see this DOE team today. Kenyatta, and Robin, and Katie, all people who I've had a chance to work with in the past and have a great deal of respect for. So thank you each for your work, and it's good to have you. I just wanted to follow up on Chair Joseph's question. Robin, you mentioned that the restorative practices funding would, would be sustained at seventeen million dollars for FY twenty-four. Do you have an under, do you have a breakdown of stimulus funding versus CTL? Is, are we planning to fully fund that with city tax levy money?
For twenty-four, yes, it's five point nine million tax levy and twelve million stimulus funding.
So it'll be the same as in FY twenty-three?
Yes.
And hopefully, the administration will see the value of this programming and continue to provide city tax levy funding to continue to support it beyond this year, when presumably, the stimulus funding will reduce. And then I just wanted to ask, could you give advice as a, to a council member like this one? Or maybe all of us, who want to see expanded restorative justice practices in our schools, who want to see more of our teachers and administrators trained in restorative justice practices? What steps should we be taking to make sure that every school in Council District Thirty-three, and for everyone else who's, I know cares deeply about this, that we see restorative justice more deeply embedded across our, our school communities?
Well, thank you for that question, Councilmember Wrestler. So advocacy, your continued advocacy, I would say, is the topmost priority in terms of seeing restorative practices across schools. Also, talking about it, when you talk about it, you put it to the forefront and more people know about it. When you visit your schools, as I know you do, ask them, do you have restorative practices? And if you don't, find out about it. Maybe it's something that your school could prioritize or could need. So your continued advocacy, you know, speaking about restorative practices, ensuring that everyone knows about it and know its impact and what it's done across New York City public schools and beyond New York City public schools. And when you go into your schools, ask schools, do you have restorative justice practices? And if you don't, contact Robin or Kenyatta, so that we can make sure that you have it.
You're going to regret that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Sanchez. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you. My next set of questions will be on intro eight five seven. Is the administration in support of this legislation?
Yes, yes, we are.
How many and what's the percentage of students in foster care changed school one or more times during twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two?
So as you know, Chair, we didn't have a, a foster care office at that time, so we didn't track this data as closely as we do now. So we can go, go back and see if we can get you the numbers for the previous years. I can tell you a little bit about this year, which is almost done. Did you ask about one transfer?
No transfers. Um, what do you have for this year, then?
Yes.
How many students and what percentage of students in foster care changed schools?
Changed schools at all?
Yeah.
It's about three hundred and fifty out of any student that was in foster care at any point during the year, which is roughly forty-six hundred.
That's from K, K two. Can you give a breakdown in grades?
Uh, I don't have that, but I can get back to you about that.
Thank you. Let's talk about absenteeism. How many and what percentage of students in foster care are chronically absent so far this school year?
So chronic absenteeism is something that we are, uh, you know, dealing with across the entire school system for all of our students, particularly, uh, you know, vulnerable students like those in foster care. We do see about half of students in foster care are chronically absent.
Do you have a percentage?
About forty-eight percent.
How many?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. How does that compare to students not in foster care?
I think that number's about thirty-two, thirty-three, so it's, it's a bit higher from a percentage perspective.
Um, what percentage of students in foster care have missed fifty percent or more of the total school year this, so far this year?
About nine percent.
And compared to their peers that are not in foster care?
Less than two percent.
Suspension rates for students in foster care, so far this school year, how many? And what's the percentage of students in foster care have received principal suspension?
Uh, so far, three hundred and eighty-six principal suspensions. And I just wanted to share that foster care accounts for two percent of our suspensions in New York City public schools. One point eight percent are principal suspensions, and two point eight percent are superintendent suspensions.
And how can we compare that to their peers that are not in care? And how can we compare that to their peers that are not in care?
Um, the, for students who are not, uh, not, it's, uh, ninety-seven percent. Because, uh, foster care students represents two percent.
Right. How many and what percentage of students have received a superintendent suspension this school year?
Superintendent suspension is two-point-eight percent.
And their peers that are not in care?
Is, uh, ninety-eight percent. Ninety-seven-point-three.
Um, are students in care that are, have special needs currently, how many and what's the percentage of students in care in the New York City system has, um, an IEP?
Twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty-three students in foster care have IEPs, and that reflects, uh, students placed in foster care at any point and for any length of time this school year. And that, and that is thirty-six-point-two percent of students in foster care.
Does that include students in charter schools and students placed by DOE in state-approved non-public schools?
It, it does not. Across all settings, there are twenty-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three students with IEPs in foster care, and that represents thirty-four-point-two percent of students in foster care with IEPs.
How about non-public schools? Do you have data on that?
The, uh, students placed by the DOE in non-public schools, uh, are folded into that overall total. I, I, I have to provide you.
It's part of that whole number. Okay, okay. Um, how about in home and hospital schools?
So, students, uh, with IEPs that recommend home and hospital instruction, uh, there are two students, uh, in foster care with IEPs that recommend home and hospital instruction, and that's zero-point-one percent of the total population of students in home and hospital instruction.
Okay. Um, we're also, you know, I'm very pleased with the Office of Foster Care, but we need to ensure students have a feasible way of getting into schools. When, uh, when they're placed in foster care, um, placements. Recognizing the importance, importance of school stability, federal, state, and law requires students to provide transportation, for, for the city to provide transportation to students in foster care, so they don't have to switch schools during a traumatic time in their life. This is very traumatic for them. However, New York City Public Schools states that students in foster care grades K to six are eligible for school bus or a MetroCard. For how many students placed in foster care MetroCard? Of course, you know, I've been raising a lot of concern about that. It's not sufficient to get them from, from point A to point B. If this is a seven-year-old, this is a six-year-old, they cannot ride public transportation by themselves. How many requests for, for busing has, uh, OPT received under foster care exceptions this year?
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
How many, how many requests for bus, um, have OPT received under foster care?
Uh, we bus about, uh, one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty foster care students.
Of the requests, of, um, of those requests, how many students in foster care actually received the busing?
That, that's the number that actually receives the busing. I'll get back to you about the, uh, requests. I, I think it's very close, uh, but I'll level check.
The, I wanted the whole number, and then those you did not, you do, you do provide. Okay. So you know, you'll be getting a letter. All right. What has the average length of time been in this year between receiving transportation and requesting for, requesting it and getting it? What's the wait?
Uh, I'll get back to you on the average time.
Okay. How many students waited more than ten days before receiving busing under foster care? You're gonna get back to me?
Yes.
You have a question? Um, give me one. How many students in foster care have transportation mandated on their IEPs? Of those students, how many have routes?
How many have transportation mandated on their IEPs? The question, we'll get back to you.
For students who are not routed, so I guess if I keep asking the questions, you're gonna have to get back to me. So know that you'll be getting a long list of homework. I'm not happy today with not being very responsive, and they know that. And this is, this is going to be on the record, that I'm very unhappy. Very unhappy that none of these questions can be answered. You have thousands and thousands of children that depends on the New York City public schools to get them from point A to point B.
Yep.
And here you sit here in positions of leadership, and you cannot provide these answers today for the public. Unacceptable for me. Councilmember Palladino.
I'm going to agree, uh, with my colleague here in council. One of the biggest problems I have in my district is the busing. I have kids waiting three hours a day. They're late for school. They're late getting picked up from school. Name me the three bus companies that you guys deal with. Give me the three main, 'cause I could give you three names. I want you to give me three names of the bus companies that you deal with. Can you answer that question?
You want us to name three bus companies?
I want you to name the three major form, the three major bus, uh, companies that take these kids back and forth to school.
You want us to name the three biggest?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I will get back to you on the three biggest.
I will tell you who they are. Are you ready? Get your pens out. It is Larissa. It is Nor-Taki or Nor-Raki, whatever. I, and I will get you the third one. But I will tell you this. What is it? Logan? Logan. Do you know who owns these three bus companies that give our kids, uh, this transportation? Are you aware of anything that has anything to do with this bus? 'Cause I'm pulling this out. This is one of the things Councilmember Palladino's gonna be doing, because I deal very closely with my schools and my special ed kids who come as, I live on northeast section of Queens. That's me. They come from Rockaway to go to my schools. One school alone, eighty thousand dollars in overtime. Now, I'm not gonna tip my hand here, 'cause it's gonna come as a big surprise when I do break the news and I work with Councilwoman Joseph, because there is something going on here that is terribly, terribly wrong. When a kid is up and dressed for school at five AM, six AM, and they have to be at school at eight AM, and they don't get there till ten, and then they're dismissed at two-twenty, and they do not get picked up until five o'clock, and then they don't get home until close to seven o'clock. I strongly urge you to look into the bus companies that you're dealing with, 'cause I know all about them. I'm just not gonna say a thing about it right now. But I will tell you this, I'm a little unhappy too. Thank you very much.
Um, in our last budget last month, we talked about reimbursement for New York City public schools, um, for reimbursement for transportation costs that incurred last school year, um, when the DOE did not provide the service. How many foster care agencies have now been contacted for reimbursement?
How many agencies have been contacted for reimbursement?
Yeah, ride, ride shares. When, when you can't provide the transportation, agencies step up, and they pay for kids to get to school.
We're, we're in contact with all the agencies. Uh, they're about, uh, you know, we're invoicing, you know, we're nearing the end of the school year, so we're invoicing with all of them and wrapping those up. Um, I believe about, right now, we have about, uh, approximately six-hundred-and-fifty thousand in reimbursements that still do.
So how much claims have been reimbursed so far?
Are you asking the total amount of claims minus the amounts of the reimbursements that have come?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I can get back to you. The total, uh, bussing contract, the total bussing cost for foster care students is about twenty-one million annually.
So what is the DOE's current policy for reimbursing foster care agencies or foster parent, parents for transportation costs?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
What does the, what is the DOE's current policy for reimbursing foster care agencies or foster parents for transportation cost?
So if you, if you incur a cost of transporting a foster care student, uh, you submit an invoice to us, and we reimburse it once it goes through our process.
How long does that take?
It varies widely, uh, depending on.
There are agencies that have, still not have been paid for transporting students to schools. When, when do you think that will be, that will happen?
We try to close everything up at the end of the fiscal year.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Menon.
Thank you so much, Chair. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table. Once your name has been called. For our virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and then give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Thank you so much to DOE for your testimony. And our first panel will be Dr. Jackie Cody, Hannah Mercuras, Chantel Hines, and Mike Porcelli. You may please make your way to the front table. Dr. Jackie Cody, you may begin your testimony.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for this opportunity. And I would ask the Chair if I do go over a few seconds, if you can give me that grace. I'll cut it short. Uh, thank you to the New York City Council and Chair of the Education Committee, Rita Joseph, for this opportunity and for introducing the resolutions 444, 445, and 446 in support of state legislators passing and the governor signing the citywide leadership team bills. New York City public school system is the largest school district in the state and nation. We can be exemplary, especially with thirty-seven-point-five billion dollars. Every student can succeed, and here's how. We witness why we need a citywide leadership team. We just saw it and heard it. Every New York City public school must have a school leadership team. The school leadership team is mandated by New York State Education Law. The SLT, is what it's called, gives opportunity for every education stakeholders, students, parents, and educators, an opportunity to engage in shared decision-making around effectively aligning the school's budget with a comprehensive education plan. The stakeholders in the school know best what students in that particular school need to succeed. The SLT operates under the open meeting floor, which also gives New York City taxpayers the opportunity to observe and assist in making sure the CEP goals are met. The main problem is, school leadership teams are not functioning in many schools, especially in underserved communities. And I did add and say and allege that the schools in desperate need of restorative justice are the schools that do not have functioning school leadership teams. And, for example, the first thing that a teacher does when they walk into a classroom is model what they want their students to learn. So how do we have the largest school district in the state and the nation not model and exemplify how to align the school's budget with a comprehensive education plan? Especially since funds go right from central directly to each school. It is a no-brainer to have every school leadership team functioning at its optimal best. Thus, the citywide leadership team will be the model and in position to assist specific schools in need in real time. This is not a top-down approach. This is a bottom-up, all-hands-on-deck, community involvement, the village in action. And I'll end here, and I hope that everyone will be able to, uh, read the rest of my, um, testimony. And thank you again for the opportunity. I'm here for questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Um, next up, we have Hannah Mercuras.
Thank you. My name is Hannah Mercuras, and I am a senior attorney in the education practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. Thank you to Chair Joseph for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to testify. BDS's education practice provides legal representation and informal advocacy to our schoolage clients and parents of children in New York City schools. As part of that work, we advocate on behalf of many families who are separated by ACS and are navigating educational challenges. Our office supports Intro 857 on the committee's agenda today. We're encouraged that the city is asking for more data on students in the foster system. In our role as educational advocates for these families, Brooklyn Defender Services sees how the foster system contributes to students becoming disconnected from school in many significant ways, including excluding parents from their children's educational, excuse me, educational lives, excluding children from their own schools through suspension, and failing to ensure that children can attend school in their communities through lack of transportation and inappropriate school transfer. The DOE, ACS, and foster agencies often exclude parents from their children's educational lives when they're separated by the foster system. This happens because schools mistakenly believe that the presence of ACS or a foster agency means that parents are no longer permitted to remain involved in their children's education. This is particularly harmful for the nearly forty percent of students in the foster system who have stu, who have disabilities. For those students, parents' participation, contributions, and consent to special education services are essential. The majority of children return home from the foster system. And when they return home, their parents' knowledge of what happened with their education while they were separated is critical to their educational success going forward. Students in the foster system also be, also become disconnected from their school communities because those students simply aren't in school, whether it's due to suspensions, lack of transportation, or school change. Though policy changes have been made to ensure school stability, children in the foster system still change schools frequently. And City Council is well aware how students in the foster system miss school because of delays in transportation. ACS and foster agencies also routinely deny requests to provide transportation or chaperones while DOE transportation is pending, as the Chair pointed out, often because they're not getting reimbursed by the DOE. Just last week, a parent I am working with requested that ACS provide transportation for her young son so he could attend his specialized program for students with autism in Brooklyn while living with her mother, a kinship foster resource in the Bronx. ACS refused to provide transportation for that child to attend school and said they were looking into remote learning, an unrealistic and inappropriate recommendation for this child. Whether the DOE or ACS are responsible, timely, reliable, and direct transportation for students in the foster system must be guaranteed. Because of these interconnected issues of school disconnection, more than half of students in the foster system are chronically absent, but parents are expected to fix these challenges the moment their children return home. We cannot hold foster agencies to a different standard than parents when it comes to school attendance. We hope the data gathered by this bill will provide critical information about the best ways for our city to support students and, and their parents as they navigate the foster system and after they are reunited. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Chantel Hines.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph. Nice to see you in person. Good afternoon, Chair Joseph, and members of the Committee on Education. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Chantal Hines, and I'm a policy entrepreneur at Next100, a startup think tank working to diversify and improve the public policy sector. Prior to Next100, I was an attorney at Advocates for Children of New York, working to ensure students in the foster system receive the support they needed to succeed. Thank you, Chair Joseph, for sponsoring Intro 857 and moving this bill forward. I am here today to ask the City Council to support Intro 857, which would require expanded data reporting for students in the foster system in the areas of special education, suspensions, and enrollment. I released a report in August 2022 about why increasing education data transparency for young people in the foster system in New York State is a critical first step in improving educational outcomes for this student group. Increased data transparency means awareness and accountability for the outcomes of these students. I am delighted to see my city, New York City, leading the charge in our state on behalf of students in the foster system, ultimately holding the New York City Department of Education accountable for the academic outcomes of this group of students. Students in the foster system in New York City face incredible educational odds. According to a January 2023 report from Advocates for Children of New York, over forty percent of students in the foster system are classified as students with disabilities, a rate more than twice that of all students. Additionally, data from the three years immediately preceding the pandemic revealed that students in the foster system experienced a disproportionate, um, no, uh, sorry, disproportionate number of suspensions, including superintendent suspensions, which are suspensions for six to one-hundred-and-eighty days. This was a rate more than five times that of New York City students overall. This report shed light on data that was previously unknown to the public and requires a response from our city. I think Intro 857 is the right response. Data plays an important role in providing a baseline understanding of the educational experiences of students in the foster system and can act as a guide for informed decision-making about how to address the educational challenges faced by these young people. In addition to data reporting, the DOE must guarantee busing or other door-to-door transportation to students in the foster system. Getting to school is a challenge that no student should have to face, much less students who are in the city's care and custody. Federal and state law require the city to provide transportation to students in the foster system so they can stay in their original school unless it is in their best interest to transfer. Since the federal law was passed in 2015, the DOE has yet to guarantee bus service or another comparable mode of transportation to these students, forcing some students who cannot travel to school on their own to transfer schools or change foster homes. The city should invest $5 million in the DOE budget to provide prompt, reliable, workable bus service or other door-to-door transportation to the relatively small number of students in the foster system who need it to maintain school stability. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony and for considering the importance of data and transportation funding for students in the foster system.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, Mike Porcelli.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Councilmembers. My name is Mike Porcelli, and I'm a mechanic. I've been a mechanic all my life. Since I was five years old, I've been fixing things. I studied automotive in high school, even though my high school tried to keep me out of the automotive program. They told my parents I was too smart to take shop class. Now, many of you may be old enough to remember when schools had shop class. I don't know if you've experienced that. All right, we have one person at least. Okay. Every group I speak to, every group I speak to about shop class, everyone says, "We used to have that in shop class, and we enjoyed it." Well, why was shop class taken out of most schools? Now, I know today we have CTE. I write a newspaper column advocating for CTE. It's called "The Other Side of Education." There's the academic side, and then there's the trade skill side, the vocational, what used to be called vocational education. Well, vocational education is just as important as academic education. Not every student is gifted academically. Not every student likes to learn from books. Many of us like to learn with our hands. I've been blessed to be able to do both ways. They told my parents, the council's told my parents, not to let me take shop class because I was too smart, and if I took shop class, I wouldn't go to college, and I was smart enough that I should go to college. Well, I proved them wrong. I took shop class, and I went to college on a full scholarship, by the way, and graduate school on a full scholarship. So the thinking that people that are in shop class, students in shop class, are not gifted at all and will not succeed in college is not true. The fact that half the students that enroll in colleges every year drop out proves that they probably didn't belong there in the first place. They might have been better off taking shop class in high school, electrical, or mechanical, or carpentry, or plumbing, which our economy is in desperate need of. A month ago, I was on TV with Mike Rowe. You may be familiar with Mike Rowe, Dirty Jobs Mike Rowe. He's the most eloquent advocate trade education has ever had. He's been advocating for trade education for 20 years. I've been doing it for 50 years, practically since I got out of high school. It's, trade education, shop class, provides valuable skills to students who can earn a terrific living. Most skilled trade graduates from either a high school program or a community college program, I teach community college, at Bronx Community College, I teach in the automotive program. Graduates of our programs or high school programs can immediately get jobs, in many cases, making more money than their parents, with no student debt in most cases. So I'm here to suggest that you need to seriously expand the CTE offerings in all high schools, and beyond that, go back to having basic shop classes in middle school, where kids can get exposed to machining, electrical, carpentry, basic homemaking, culinary. Middle school kids should have the opportunity to explore all career fields, and then they can pick a field that they want to study in high school. And just make sure there are enough CTE programs available. There should be a seat for every kid who wants a place in a CTE program. Exactly. Everybody has different gifts. Make sure the education matches those gifts.
Thank you. Just for the record, I wanted to let you know, this council in FY '23 made historic investments in CTE. We invested over $30 million in CTE programming. And some of them, I know I've visited, and I've seen the work that's being done in the Bronx. We have an automotive program in the Bronx. They actually fix your cars. They have partnerships with dealerships, with Ford. And I had promised Councilmember Palladino we should visit some as the education chair so you can see the kind of work that's being done. I agree, HomeX should come back. Learning how to make, what did they teach us in middle school? How to type and how to make copying machine, sewing. For example, I visited Chelsea CTE program. They teach students the latest in fiber optics, so they can work with their hands, like you say. Most students are tactile. They do graphic design. And when they leave these programs, they leave with a certificate that takes them straight to career pathway. So that's what this chair does, and we invest in that, and we will continue to do so. But I would love, I will invite the council member to visit some of these CTE programs across the city to see the work and maybe get her input as to maybe where we can have them more and what type of programming we can have for our young people.
CTE graduates can immediately get jobs making more money than lawyers.
Absolutely, six-figure salaries, correct. My parents in foster care, what do you think we should be doing differently in terms of engaging foster parents? Not foster parents, but birth parents when their child is temporarily taken away? What is the percentage of them returning home to their families? Being reunited with their families?
Do you mean, oh, you can pull it. My understanding, the majority of children return home from foster care. And I'm happy to get back to the council with exact numbers about the number of children who return home. One of the things that I tell every single DOE staff member that I speak with is every single call that you make to a foster parent or a foster care agency, you should make that exact same call to parents. They should be receiving the same kind of communication about their child that the foster parent is receiving. There are so many ways that parents become disconnected from their children's school when they're separated by the foster system. And it takes a lot of resources, right? We ask our school staff to do so much work. But it's incredibly important because, as the councils discussed today and heard today, children change foster homes.
You saw the numbers, you saw the numbers.
Exactly. And so really, the adult who is often the most consistent, the only consistent adult in that child's education is their parent. Case planners from foster agencies change too. So do educational specialists. The person who's really involved in that child's school life, who has been involved in that child's school life for years before they enter the foster system, is suddenly cut out. And it's incredibly harmful when children return home because their parents don't know their teachers. My colleague worked, just last week, attended an IEP meeting for a parent who hadn't been involved in their child's special education services or life or IEP meetings for an entire year. And that child was close to returning home. It's so much catch-up work that parents have to do at a time that's really challenging for their family, when they should be focused on other things. They should have been included all throughout.
Ms. Hines, the chair, yes, you can chime in.
I keep sitting too far back in the chair. I'll just add, I've recently completed a qualitative research study asking people in New York State, primarily in the New York City area, what can we do to make our schools more supportive for young people in the foster system? And I had about 12 parents participate. And I think, I echo everything you said, but I also think the burden falls on ACS as well to have active engagement with our parents. They routinely lock them out of educational decisions. I can't tell you how many, pretty much all 12 of the parents said to me, they do what they want to do. They don't tell me where they're going to go to school. They don't ask me if they can change schools. They don't ask my opinion. In my prior role as Advocates for Children, I did a ton of work with agencies, like you have to communicate with the parent. The parent has to sign consent. So that breaks my heart that in a special education case, the parent wasn't involved. But parents largely feel disconnected. They largely feel disempowered. And I think that's an issue that ACS must address, as well as the school system. Part of the issue in the school system as well is their data systems are not equipped to hold two types of information at the same time, which, you know, many kids have two parents. So I don't know why this is an issue, but it was a huge issue that we were working with on a working group with ACS and DOE, just trying to get the systems themselves to hold two different pieces of information so that both foster parent and parent can be notified, so that they have that information on hold. They can send out those automatic notices, and parents are aware. And yes, in certain cases, you may have to redact certain information, but that's fine. You should still do it because it's their right to be involved. So I think the burden falls both ways.
And why is it, do you think, the suspension rate is so high among our students in care?
Well, again, going back to my research, I spoke with 51 current and former foster youth. And what I heard, number one, is a lack of compassion and understanding. School staff don't understand what these students are walking into school with every day. They don't understand that they may have changed homes. They may have come to school in one home, and they're going home, going back, leaving school, sorry, to a different home. They don't understand that. They don't understand the trauma that some of these students have experienced prior to placement. And let's not forget, during their placement in the system, lots of traumatic things have happened to people in various foster homes. So when they show up, and maybe students get a little dysregulated, a little rustled, their feathers get ruffled, which is a natural response to any type of trauma, right? They're immediately labeled "bad kid," suspended, instead of provided the social-emotional support and the skills that they need to navigate those very deep, heavy emotions. So that's the number-one thing that has come up in my conversations with impacted individuals.
Why do you think we haven't mastered the transportation aspect of students in foster care? It's been mandated since 2015, and it's 2023.
Frankly, OPT is a mess. And the way that it's structured, which is district by district and borough by borough, doesn't account for the lives of many New Yorkers who, and students in the foster system particularly, who go to school out of district, who go to school in a different borough. There should never be a choice between a student staying with family or staying close to their school, which is near their parent, which is in their community, and remaining with family. There's no reason why non-kinship foster placements should happen because school is far. And the way that OPT works, it's so difficult, well, this is what the DOE, this is what OPT says, that they can't find a route, they can't find a route, they can't find a route. Make a route! We need the funding for direct door-to-door transportation for these families. It's so disruptive to their family lives, to their educational lives. It's incredibly harmful.
I would just add, if they're not going to make a route, then open up pathways of transportation that include, you know, you mentioned earlier, a share of ride sharing, okay? But you have to be able to, if someone needs to be in that car, it certainly can't be the caseworker because then what's happening to all the other 10, 12, 13, 15 kids on their caseload? If they're spending their whole day going back and forth to school with one child, there needs to be compensation for chaperones if they're going to be required to be in these vehicles. Other cities across the country have this mandate too. It's a federal law, and they have figured out a way to do it. They have abided by the requirement of the federal law that requires a transportation agreement be in place. The last time I was kind of in the midst of those conversations, I don't think the DOE and ACS had come to an agreement and documented that agreement. So there has to be a meeting of the minds, and DOE and OPT have to come to the table. And they need to have a good faith, a good faith conversation on it.
It's incredibly disheartening to be in court and see this problem unfold, the traumatic experience of children being placed into the foster system, and then have ACS, have the parent ask, "Can you provide transportation so that my child can attend their school?" And have ACS and the foster agency say no, and then for everyone to throw up their hands, "You know, DOE bureaucracy, it's going to take, you know, it's going to take some time." It shouldn't take any time. It should happen immediately.
It takes about 30 days for a student placing care to get to school.
They always say 57, but it's not.
No, I know. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hanif and Councilmember Krishna. Councilmember Palladino?
Excuse my ignorance. How many, how long is the base, when you, this disjointed thing that we've got going on right now with these kids? Is it because they're, how long is their stay with, an average stay with a foster family?
That's a great question. And I have, I can provide those numbers in my written testimony.
Because I think part of the problem is, and I know people who took in foster kids, and they took them in for years at a time. It wasn't three months, it wasn't four months, it wasn't two years. It was maybe three to five years, and so on and so forth. And they were acclimated, and they went to our schools, and everything was great, and everything worked out beautifully. I think because we are so involved in a transient sort of mentality now for so many different reasons, blame it on the year 2023, and it's not 1963, I don't know. But right now, you know, the length of stay, I also feel that, I'm going to get off the track a little bit. I think a lot of these kids are treated more like a commodity. They are a number. They're dollars and cents in a foster parent's care. So when I hear that a parent doesn't care or a parent doesn't get up in the morning to make sure the kid gets, that happens too often, way, way too often. It's not the child's fault that the child is in this situation. It's the grown-ups. We need grown-ups back in the room again. You know, this is, this has gone, this has gone so far to one side, it's not even funny. We can't keep track. How many kids are there in the foster system right now? In our foster care system in the city of New York? How many kids? And how many of those kids are school-age kids? How long do they stay when they're put in foster care into one home? Then they return back to their parents, and maybe their parents screw up again, and then they have to go out again. I mean, this is, we are in such a debacle. We need to start to figure this out, you know? And the only way we're going to figure this out is when maybe we start to cut back on how much people get paid in order to take in a foster child. Because when they get paid this kind of money, they don't care. They just don't care. And I, the kids, like I said, kids are being treated as a commodity and not as a priority. That has to change. That mentality in general has got to change. CPS is called for the simple, I've seen, and I've gone to homes, where CPS is called because the kid is having a bad day, and the parent gets in trouble for something simple. But then we have the other extreme, where the parents are definitely not feeding these kids properly, not clothing these kids properly, not using the money that they're being given by the city of New York properly. I think we got to get to the root of the problem here. And once we get to the root of the problem, we could kind of take care of the other stuff. This is basic needs that our kids are not getting. And it's pathetic. It is pathetic. I don't know what else to say. I got to get educated some more. I want on this committee.
Well, thank you, Councilmember, but I just, for the record, wanted to clarify a few things. Children staying care for about 18 months, that's the state law. Also, the stipend they give parents is not enough for anybody to make a living. It's peanuts. It's peanuts. Yeah, the stipend is, you do it out of love. I was a foster mom. I had two boys, I adopted my two boys. That's why I fight so hard for them. So this is personal for me as well. This is personal. So knowing the need, I was blessed, I was an educator. My husband was a nurse, so we were able to manage. But those who don't have that support but want to do well and open their homes for children do need the support for transportation, do need the support from getting point A to point B. So it's New York City Public Schools, and I've said that before. I'm happy that we finally, under our leadership here in the New York City Council, under my push, we were able to finally open an office that deals with student foster care. Never been done before. There's about 8,000 students in New York City Public Schools that are in foster care. And so we were able to do that. Now that we need to, next step is to make sure they have reliable transportation. When a child becomes into care, it takes about 30 days for them to go into school because there is no transportation. They want to give a six-year-old a MetroCard. So we got to do better.
So we got to do better as a city. Thank you so much. You have a question, Mike?
Can I follow up on something I've heard here today?
Go ahead.
First, I want to commend all of you for your obvious passion with which you deal with this, these issues. But most of what I heard here today relates to problems with students, and restorative practices and all that. I'm going to suggest that if students were placed in the programs best suited to their abilities and talents, most of these problems would disappear. But all the CTE programs that I'm familiar with, they're all excellent. The teachers are excellent, they're dedicated. The students are outstanding, the ones I've seen. But I've been told that CTE programs only, about 10% of the people that request the seats are getting in. So that means, I don't know, I don't have any specific numbers, but I'm told it's roughly like 10%. One principal told me, they have to, they only accept 10% of their applications. What, those other 90% are going to be less than satisfied with the education they get, if it's not matched to what they really want to do. So I'm suggesting, as good as CTE is, in all the schools that I've seen it, it needs to be expanded massively.
Absolutely.
And if I may, just real quick, this is exactly the reason, everything we heard here today is the reason why we need a citywide leadership team. Because as an educator, like the chair, I have all kinds of accolades of great work, mainly because I listen to the students. The students have the best answers for their own education. And they need to be represented at the citywide level, at the district level, and definitely in schools. They need, I know second graders that have something to tell you. So foster care children, children of color, every child needs to be represented on the leadership teams so they can share what is needed for them to succeed in school, whether it be CTE, or going to college, whatever it may be. And my last appeal is, get rid of the name GNT, because every child is gifted and talented. We should call it accelerated learning. Thank you so much again.
Thank you so much to this panel. Our next panel will be a hybrid panel. We will hear from one person in person, David Adams, followed by on Zoom, Erica Palmer. David, you can please make your way to the front desk. David, when you're ready, you may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Councilmembers. My name is David Adams, CEO of the Urban Assembly. And I'm here to speak in support of Intro 928, focused on the reporting of funding for restorative justice programming, and Resolution 422, calling on New York City Public Schools to expand access to career-connected learning. The Urban Assembly is a nonprofit organization that has designed a network of 23 public schools across the city. All Urban Assembly schools provide career-connected learning and are built on a model of social and emotional learning. We do not screen for admission, and our collective graduation rate is 91%. Over the last two years, the Urban Assembly has been supporting schools in New York City to organize around the principles of social and emotional development. Through the course of this work, the Urban Assembly has catalogued how schools connect programs and approaches to social-emotional competencies, like decision-making, relationship skills, and cooperation. The use of approaches like restorative justice and peer mediation are consistently identified by schools in New York as a way to teach those skills to students. When implemented proactively, restorative justice programs are not just about alternatives to discipline, but about equipping young people with the fundamental skills of life, skills like conflict resolution, communication, active listening, and more. These skills form the basis of students' social and emotional learning and are important to students' peer relationships, school climate, and have been found to influence outcomes like mental health and the use of public assistance up to 20 years after students are exposed to experiences that teach them. Every student in New York City Public Schools and every citizen in New York City benefits when young people graduate from our school system proficiency in their social and emotional skills. These are not only the skills that are in, these are also the skills that are in highest demand in workforce. The Urban Assembly has designed seven career and technical education schools in New York City, representing the highest concentration of CTE schools in New York State. These schools, like the Urban Assembly, New York Harbor School, the Urban Assembly School for Collaborative Healthcare, and the New York, Urban Assembly Maker Academy, were founded on the principle that students' economic and social mobility can be enhanced when they leave high schools with credentials that are industry-recognized, and empower students to do as well as know. For 25 years, the Urban Assembly has led the way in this space, most recently being highlighted by the New York State in their planned pilot webinars around graduation requirements. They delayed validation by bringing 400 students in New York Public Schools the opportunity to earn college credit through outlier, and through our paper, Let's Measure What Really Matters, which calls on the New York Board of Regents to replace certain exit exams with work-based learning opportunities. Every student has something to contribute to our society. We must organize our schools to reflect this fact. Reso 422 brings us one step closer to a public school system that elevates this idea. The Urban Assembly maintains three policy positions: on the value of unscreened admissions, on the centrality of social and emotional learning to the educational experience, and on the importance of career-connected learning preparing students for post-secondary success. Today, I have the great fortune of speaking in support of Intro 928 and Reso 423, and to quote Meatloaf, "Two out of three ain't bad." I thank the council for your time on this subject and look forward to bringing about a system where all students are equipped to succeed in school, work, and life. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, Erica Palmer.
Time has begun. Can you unmute yourself, please? We can't hear you.
Won't let me.
Okay. There you go. You're fine. You may begin.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute myself. So thank you very much for holding this hearing today and for inviting us to testify. I'm here to testify in support of Intro 857, to expand the DOE's data reporting requirements to include metrics on students in foster care. My name is Erica Palmer. I work at Advocates for Children and direct our foster care project. With the strong backing of the council, thank you very much, the DOE recently created the first-in-the-nation office focused solely on students in the foster system. As a new team dives into student education data, they can see what we have noted anecdotally for years, that students in foster care are disproportionately suspended from school and overrepresented in segregated special education settings like District 75, rather than getting the behavioral supports and interventions they need in their home schools to heal from the trauma they've experienced and continue to experience while in care. While the DOE is required to post reports on special education services and suspensions, these reports currently do not include any specific information about students in foster care, masking the significant disparities, public access to this data is vital so that policymakers and advocates can identify key intervention points, develop solutions, and hold the school system accountable. That's why it's critical the reporting laws be amended to include students in foster care as a distinct group. And I'm happy to hear today that the DOE fully supports this addition. Thank you, Chair Joseph, and the committee for your advocacy in this area. As we strive to improve education delivered to students in foster care, we also must ensure that students in the foster system have prompt, reliable, and appropriate ways to get to school, as we have heard from others on the panel. Federal and state law requires the city to provide transportation to students in foster care so they can stay in their school of origin. While many students in foster care do get busing, as we have heard, the city still does not guarantee bus service or a comparable mode of transportation to these students. As the DOE website currently states, students in foster care in grades pre-K to 6 are eligible for school bus service or a MetroCard. And if a bus is not available within 10 business days, alternative transportation may be available. While the DOE says it will reimburse transportation costs if there is no bus route, they will not reimburse for a chaperone, as we've heard, if the foster parent or an agency staff member cannot escort the student to and from school every day. And there have been significant delays in reimbursing agencies for transportation expenses. As a result, students who cannot travel on their own have been forced to change schools and even foster homes. Even when students do get busing, delays of a month or more can be hugely destabilizing to the families. Like Councilmember Palladino shared, I also routinely hear about students in foster care who are being picked up at 6:00 in the morning or early, earlier, only to arrive to school late, or drivers who simply don't show up. Last week, I learned about a child whose bus hasn't been coming at least once per week for over two months now, since before spring break. When the bus does come, the driver is often several hours late because, as the bus company inform the foster parent, they have to pick up and drop off the regular kids first. To ensure students get the transportation they desperately need so they can arrive to school every day and be prepared for learning, the city should invest $5 million in the DOE budget to provide prompt, reliable bus service or other door-to-door transportation to students in foster care. Some of my colleagues previously testified as to, you know, some solutions to this problem. We appreciate the council's commitment to improving the education of students in foster care, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I have a question for you. In your testimony, you stated that we're looking for an exit exam and work base. What did you mean by that?
Can I repeat the question, Chair Joseph?
The, you said New York Board of Regents to replace certain exit exam with work-based learning opportunities. Walk me through that. What does that look like?
Yes, Chair Joseph. So we published a paper called, "Let's Measure What Really Matters." In our paper, we were advocating for the regions to go from the amount of regions that we have now to focus on ELA and math only, in order to create more opportunities for students to create, to have work-based learning experiences. So right now, what we're seeing in our schools in New York City, particularly in high schools, is that constraints of the regions means that we have narrowed our vision to what it means to be educated in New York City. Teachers are focused on passing the regions rather than providing a holistic education for young people. We believe, based on this paper, that reducing the amount of exit exams will allow schools to invest in a wider range of experiences for young people, like internships and work-based learning, so that they're prepared not only for passing tests, but passing the test of life.
Okay, and also putting them on a career pathway. Is that, that's the goal, right? Once they finish the CTEs, to put them on a career pathway?
Yes, Chair Joseph. So our understanding is that all students are on a career pathway. The question is, what kind of credentials that they acquire to put themselves in a way that can be successful? So whether those credentials are created in terms of the 9 to 12 system in the process, whether that's a two-year degree, whether that's a certificate degree. We know that every student needs to have some sort of credential post-secondary to be successful. The question is when they achieve that, and how they stack to those credentials to be successful. So all students are on a career pathway. All students must do something to contribute to their society. We believe paid work is one element of that. And when students have an opportunity to participate in that, they're more motivated to graduate high school on time.
Absolutely. And they show up to schools even more often because they have an interest in the passion. Well, thank you for the work that you do. Thank you.
You're welcome, Chair Joseph.
Thank you so much to this panel. If there's anybody else in the room who wishes to testify, please make your way to the Sergeant in Arms desk at the back. And if there's anybody else on Zoom who wishes to testify, please use the raised hand feature. Not seeing anybody in the room or on Zoom. And so that concludes our hearing for today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for our panelists and everyone who testified in today's hearing. Thank you.